To the April 26, 2022, Oshkosh Common Council Meeting, please call the roll.
Hanson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Wajahowski?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Mugerauer?
Here.
Paul Mary?
Here.
All present.
Councilmember Hanson will lead us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. Mayor decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, we have a couple of proclamations this evening. First, I'd like Lyle Conrad to step forward for the National Day of Prayer.
Whereas the Continental Congress first declared a National Day of Prayer in 1775, making National Days of Prayer a longstanding American tradition. And whereas the National Day of Prayer became law in 1952, when unanimously passed by Congress and signed by President Harry S. Truman. And whereas May 5, 2022 marks the 70th Annual National Day of Prayer. And whereas the theme for 2022 is "Exalt the Lord who has established us." And whereas millions of people from coast to coast will create a huge wave of prayer illustrating the unity of God's people over the circumstances facing us during this crucial time for our nation. And now therefore I, Lori Palmieri, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 5, 2022, a day of prayer in the City of Oshkosh. And I encourage our fellow citizens to join in prayer, seeking God's grace and asking Him to touch the minds and hearts of our people and our leaders so that we may meet the challenges that lie before us with courage, wisdom, and justice.
Thank you, Lori, and all of you for supporting this National Day of Prayer. I'm here in behalf of Mike Stratz, who didn't quite make it back from the South today. And I usually assist him in setting up for that hour of prayer, three-quarter hour, noon to quarter to 1:00. And we all know there are a lot of reasons to pray for our nation and our world these days. And I hope many of you, if possible, will join Mike and I and quite a few others usually at the flagpole here in front of City Hall a week from Thursday at noon till quarter to 1:00. Bless you all.
Thank you.
Next, we have some special guests this evening. First, I'd like to make an introduction of Mi Yang. Mi Yang is the president of the Hmong Service Center here in Oshkosh. Mi Yang was born in Laos and escaped to Thailand in 1965 after the Vietnam War. Through refugee programs, Mi and her family resettled in the U.S. in late 1979. She's married with a family of two sons and four daughters. Mi is a longtime Oshkosh native. In 1989, she graduated salutatorian from Oshkosh North High School and then received a Bachelor's in Business Administration in Finance and minor in Economics from UW-Oshkosh in 1994. Mi is a proud business owner with her husband. Together, they started a financial business with Mutual of Omaha Insurance Company that has been guiding and protecting the financial well-being of families across Wisconsin for the last 30 years. She's also been recognized for her leadership. And many of us know how many events Mi Yang and her family and the Hmong Service Center have put on in Oshkosh over the years. Most recently, she was recognized in 2021 as one of Wisconsin's 34 most influential Asian-American leaders by Elevation. I'd also like to introduce Dr. Mai C. Tao. Dr. Mai C. Tao is a medical anthropologist with research interests in history, trauma, displacement, the refugee body, biopolitics, and the politics of care. She also engages in community-based work, currently leading two grant-funded projects. One examines the intersection of type 2 diabetes and social determinants of health for the Hmong in Milwaukee, and the other on historical trauma and healing in Hmong communities in Wisconsin. Dr. Tao's scholarly and community work embodies the dynamism of Hmong studies. She brings together these seemingly different but deeply connected aspects of her work to inform the Hmong Studies Program. First, to highlight the Hmong Studies Program as an academic program with theoretical depth that contributes to various fields such as anthropology, sociology, history, critical refugee studies, and ethnic studies, to name a few. And second, to maintain the Program's connection and contribution to UW-Oshkosh's surrounding communities. Along with Mi Yang and Dr. Mai C. Tao, we also have some special guests, students from the Hmong Studies Program, as well as Alex Hummel here on behalf of the university. And I'd like you all to come up and receive the proclamation as I read it, if you would like to join me. Whereas the Hmong are an ethnically and culturally diverse people originally from southern China with fractions of Hmong who migrated to Southeast Asia, specifically Vietnam, Laos, Thailand, and Myanmar. And whereas during the Vietnam War, the Central Intelligence Agency and United States Armed Forces recruited, organized, trained, and assisted Hmong forces to support the American war effort in Laos. And when the United States withdrew from the region in the early 1970s, the Hmong faced harsh retribution from the communist Vietnamese and Laos governments for their involvement. And whereas thousands of Hmong people courageously fought alongside Americans during this secret war, many lost loved ones, their livelihood, and were ultimately forced to flee their native lands and resettle in communities throughout the United States, including Oshkosh, Wisconsin, and... Whereas Hmong-Americans have lived and worked in Oshkosh, Wisconsin for over 45 years and have greatly contributed to our city's rich history, culture, economy, and public service. And whereas the Hmong Service Center reports there are approximately 2,000 Hmong people in Winnebago County. And whereas the Oshkosh Area School District reports there are approximately 377 students that speak the Hmong language in the Oshkosh area. And whereas, recognized statewide since 2004, Hmong Heritage Month, formerly Hmong History Month, is an opportunity for Oshkosh to reflect on the many sacrifices that the Hmong people have made in service to our country and to celebrate the vibrant, resilient, and diverse Hmong culture as an important part of our city's identity. And whereas we recognize that this year's celebration comes at a time of increased racism and violence directed towards Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities. And on this occasion, we reaffirm our commitment to working towards building an Oshkosh that is a more welcoming and inclusive place for all. And whereas this month, the City of Oshkosh joins all Wisconsinites in celebrating Hmong Heritage Month by embracing the power of diversity and honoring the countless contributions of Hmong individuals and communities across our city, state, nation, and world. Now therefore I, Lori Palmieri, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Hmong Heritage Month throughout the City of Oshkosh, and I commend this observance to all our city's residents. I'm going to pass it to my seat, and I have copies for each of you, so if you would just share your thoughts.
I do have a little thing I wanted to say. Thanks so much for giving me the opportunity to share a few words as to why this is important to me. I grew up in the Fox Valley, and I remember growing up, I learned about the history of the Vietnam War. And there was a lot of times that I was hoping to hear that the war also spilled over to Laos, which included recruiting the Hmong, and also spilling over to Cambodia. And so now, as a professor of anthropology and also the director of Hmong Studies, I believe it's important to proclaim a month to the commemoration of Hmong peoples in Oshkosh because of the way Hmong history has been omitted from the national memory of the U.S. As an educator, this history is not only stolen from our Hmong youth, who grew up only hearing these stories in bits and pieces from their elders, but also stolen from our non-Hmong citizens and our neighbors. I personally have heard non-Hmong students also talk about how they are surprised to hear about this history and that they have not been taught this history. So this proclamation enables us to partake in filling in the gaps of the American story by highlighting Hmong history as part of American history. I see this proclamation as an act of mourning, to mourn the losses the Hmong community experienced and continue to experience with this ongoing racism. And for a long time, Hmong communities have worked to name the silences of Hmong history through community advocacy, through community members who sought to learn their own histories, and through creation of Hmong cultural preservation programs. And so it is through these kinds of collaboration between the Hmong Studies Program, Hmong Student Union, the Mayor of Oshkosh, and the Hmong Service Center that we resurface the histories that have been silenced and to name the experiences of Hmong community as valid experiences and as experiences that are part of American history. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, City Councilmembers. As a resident of 35 years in Oshkosh, I've seen the city grow over the years. I raised a beautiful family here. Many, many events have held, but there was no proclamation. And today, there is one. And I am just so happy and proud that from this day forward, we have a special time of the year where we can celebrate, we can teach, and we can educate our children and our community and the community at large. Thank you all.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Yen Yukiang Veng, and I'm a junior at UW-Oshkosh here studying human services leadership. I am also the co-president of the Hmong Student Union, and we wanted to speak a little bit about the importance of proclaiming April as Hmong Heritage Month in Oshkosh. 21 years ago, I was born here in Oshkosh, and I have lived in Oshkosh ever since. While growing up, I wondered whether people really cared about me being Hmong, my Hmong identity, and I always thought that it felt unimportant. All of the Hmong people that I knew, my family, friends, and more, they never felt recognized despite all of the sacrifices that we have made. Hmong students have been feeling invisible at our university and within the City of Oshkosh as well, and being able to proclaim this month as Hmong Heritage Month helps make us visible. Finally, we are receiving this long overdue recognition of recognizing April as Hmong Heritage Month. The Hmong Student Union is honored to be here to see this moment go down in history, and we could not be more happy that the City of Oshkosh acknowledges Hmong people. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of this and hearing our words.
Thank you so much. It's a very proud moment. All right. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have an introduction of staff.
Madam Mayor, as your Finance Director, earlier this year, we lost the Administrative Assistant to our department. You might have worked with Paula Luther in the past, dealing with budgets and those things moving forward. After we lost our Administrative Assistant, I went to the City Manager and our Human Resources Department to upgrade the position to become more of a professional position. So we now have a position for Management Analyst dealing with budgeting. And I am pleased to announce to you that Crystal Wagner has started out as that Management Analyst dealing with a budget. So in addition to dealing with budgets... Oh, by the way, Crystal is a graduate of UW-Oshkosh and is a resident of the City of Oshkosh. So we have a resident and a former student at UW-Oshkosh being part of our team, which is really great. Crystal will help us out in the budget, our capital improvement planning process. She'll help our department with council agendas. But more importantly, I'll be helping Crystal to learn and present presentations to the council on policy development issues, as well as the Long Range Finance Committee. They'll see a lot of Crystal as well. So I am pleased that Crystal is now part of our team. I don't know, Crystal, do you want to say a couple quick words or not?
Sure. Well, thank you so much for the welcome. I really appreciate it. And I'm just grateful for the opportunity to use my talents and abilities to serve the city.
Welcome.
Welcome.
You'll see a great budget time, I'm sure.
We just feel bad you got to work for us.
All right. Next, we are at Citizens Statements to Council. Clerk, do we have anyone registered?
No one has registered.
All right. Very good. We'll move on to Consent Agenda. We have a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Ford.
Can I pull items 7 and 8 from the agenda, please?
Yes. Any other discussion on other items on the consent agenda? All right. Please call the roll on Consent, minus 7 and 8.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wajahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Palmieri?
Aye.
Period 7.
All right. We will go back to Resolution 22-161. Item number 7, approve acceptance of waivers of special assessment notices and hearings for storm sewer laterals. And do we have any additional discussion on that item?
Do we need another motion?
So moved. Second.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I just, I pulled these so I can abstain because they affect my property.
All right. Please call the roll on 22-161.
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wajahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Present.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Palmieri?
Aye.
Period 6.
And Resolution 22-162, approved final resolution for special assessments for storm sewer laterals relating to contract number 22-20, various locations with signed waiver. Can we have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right. Please call the roll.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wajahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Present.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Palmieri?
Aye.
Period 6.
Okay. We will move on to new ordinances. We have two new ordinances this evening. Neither of them will have any action taken this evening. Ordinance 22-178, approve zone change from single-family residential 5, District SR5, to urban mixed-use District UMU for property located at 2854 Fond du Lac Road. Plan Commission recommends approval. And the second new ordinance being introduced tonight is 22-179, amend section 17-33 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to public nuisance affecting property usage. We will move on then to pending ordinances. 22-180, amend section 1210A53 and create section 1210A54 of the City of Oshkosh Municipal Code pertaining to bid protests. We'll take a motion and a second.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on the ordinance. Attorney Prescott, do you want to just give a brief summary of this item, please?
Sure. Currently, the Municipal Code does have a procedure for objecting or filing a bid protest, but it's pretty vague. So all this does is just attaches certain deadlines and makes it a little bit more formal, just so the bidder has a clear, a more clear way of objecting if they want to, and the city itself has a better way of deciding whether or not it's an appropriate objection.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, please call the roll.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wajahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Palmieri?
Aye.
Period 7.
Our next item is Resolution 22-181, approve tax increment District Number 42. Project Plan, designate tax increment District Number 42 boundaries. Create the tax increment District Number 42, Morgan Crossing Phase 2. Plan Commission recommends approval.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on 22-181. I see Community Development Director Ms. Nyforth getting at the ready. Are there specific questions from Council? If you'd just like to give a description of the project?
Absolutely. This is Phase 2 of Morgan Crossing, which is along Pearl, Ave., and Oshkosh. It'll be a 5-story, 83-unit multifamily building. It's going to be about $10 million or $17 million to build. There'll be about $10 million of value that will be added. The developer is requesting about $2.25 million to help with the cost to fill the gap in the financing. And it's looking to potentially fulfill our Pago obligation within 13 years or so. So it's a great opportunity to redevelop one of the last areas in our Marion Road redevelopment area and to provide some much-needed housing in our central city.
Councilmember Ford.
Yeah. Do you know offhand how long that has been vacant under the current ownership?
Probably about 15 years, 10 to 15 years, I would say.
All right. So it's good that this is moving.
Correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Please call the roll.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wajahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Palmieri?
Aye.
Period 7.
All right. Our next new resolution is item 22-182, accept donations and approve agreement with Oshkosh Area Community Foundation and C.R. Meyer for the Black Bear Fox exhibit at Menominee Park Zoo.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If Park Director Maurer was on his way up, I guess if you wouldn't mind giving the people at home a little rundown on what we're doing here and the partnership that you're strongly forming again with the Community Foundation to support this. Sure. In our 2014 Menominee Park Zoo Master Plan, one of the exhibits that was high on our priority to try to construct was the Black Bear exhibit. That's an exhibit that has been requested for a number of years prior to myself even getting here, and we had some interested donors in that exhibit. That is something that, over the last year, the donors came forward and asked if we could continue to move that project forward. So we did work with the donors and the Community Foundation and C.R. Meyer on a three-party agreement similar to what we have done in the past with our Otter exhibit and Eagle exhibit. And that is what we're recommending tonight. It is a two-step approval. We accept the agreement with the three-party agreement, but we also accept the donation as a finished product once it is completed.
Councilmember Wajahowski.
Thank you. So I know it says under the fiscal impact that no city funds are being requested, but it does mention that the fiscal impact would be future maintenance and animal care. Do you have like an idea of what that annual cost might be?
I haven't, we haven't put that together yet. If you recall, when we were going through the 2022 budget process, we did have discussion about the number of exhibits we've added over the past number of years, as well as this added exhibit. And that's when the Council did approve a 50% FTE for a zoo specialist this year. So that is one expense that you need to be aware of. It'll be fully funded after this year. But as far as the annual operating for the exhibit itself and the bear, that's yet to be determined. We do expect additional donations to help with the future maintenance of the zoo as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Ray, again, nice job working with the foundation and some amazing donors here in the community. Give us a little scale and scope of the project and how significant this donation is to our community and to the park.
Yeah. Like I said, it's been an exhibit that has been requested by the community for years. People from a long time ago in Oshkosh may recall, there was a gentleman that actually was bringing a bear initially down to South Park many, many years ago. And that was, struck some interest in some of the longtime residents to get a bear at the zoo, which is, you know, a long story short. But the exhibit itself is going to be a building that's actually going to house husbandry facilities for two exhibits. And one half will be husbandry for the black bear, and the other half will actually be a husbandry facility for our fox exhibit. So it's a combined building, separate exhibits, but it combines the housing for those two animals. Those fox, we actually inherited a couple of years ago for our exhibits. We just had them in some temporary exhibit space. So this will be a long-term facility for those as well. I do want to let the community know that Tom and Penny Herrenberg did support this very generously to make sure that the project could happen. So we are very appreciative of that. And we're also looking at some other potential donors down the road as well.
Sure. And Tom and Penny also pay the admission fee, correct?
Correct.
They cover to keep the zoo free for the entire community and everything?
Correct. They provide a donation to the zoo operations every year to keep the zoo free of charge.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Tom and Penny, and everybody else that contributed. Again, great job, and I think the whole community welcomes this project with open arms. So thanks, Ray.
We've had a number of discussions in the past about gifts, and it is a wonderful thing when folks in our community decide that they would like to be generous and provide donations to the city. Some of the things that we've talked about in the past, though, is when that becomes a maintenance and an ongoing operations cost, and it kind of turns into a gift that keeps on giving. So while I love bears and I love foxes, I don't think I can support this this evening. You know, when we talk about some of our responsibilities beyond the 1.4 million, which is, again, very generous, very appreciated, the how we're going to pay for that when we, you know, we only added a 50% FTE zoo specialist. So I won't be able to support this this evening. Any other discussion or comments?
I think Tom and Penny will probably want you to feed the bear.
I might lose an arm over this one. All right. Please call the roll.
Hanson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Wajahowski?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Palmieri?
No.
Period 61.
All right. We are at Council Discussion in direction to City Manager and Future Agenda Items. First, on Future Agenda Items is, let's see, we have a recommendation to Wisconsin DOT regarding the Jackson and Oregon Street Bridge.
Mr. Robby is available through the web, so he can probably chime in on this as well. But the DOT is looking for a recommendation... as well, but the, the DOT is looking for a recommendation from the council. We're anticipating that they need it by, I believe, June 14th, I believe is the date they're looking at, so it'll likely be on the agenda, I think, at the June, what's, James, do you remember what the date is?
It will be on the agenda for the June 14th Common Council Meeting, and Mr. Bill Bertrand will be in attendance that evening as well.
So with that in mind, why don't you start thinking about that, go back over the presentation that was given, and certainly, if there are any questions that you have that you would like answered in advance, please pass them on to myself or Mr. Robby so we can get that information from you. And I'll continue to have this on as future agenda items, so like if the next meeting you think of something, just mention it. We'll jot them down and make sure we get them back to you so that when Mr. Bertrand is here, we give you all the information that you're looking for so you can reach an informed decision.
I would also like to point out that there will be a workshop at the Plan Commission on May 17th, and Plan Commission will be reviewing and providing their recommendation to the Common Council at their June 7th meeting.
So we've got that on the future agenda. I'll point out for future meetings, we've got the updated budget calendar with the, the new dates for the July 6 budget workshop. Appreciate council responding to that one. So you'll see the, the schedule that we have there, along with the dates for, throughout the budget season.
Deputy Mayor.
Appreciate it, Mayor. Sorry about that, City Manager rollover. Future agenda item, we had a brief discussion earlier, but in terms of, of where we are with the ARPA funding and the 25% for the non-public or the non-infrastructure improvements, I think, in my own opinion, I think it's time that we have some more, some more meat to that a little bit from your office in terms of what the next steps might be, what we're looking at in terms of timeline, those types of things from yours and the finance office. I think, whether it's next meeting or not, I think it's just, it's time to put it on the radar that we, we start hearing about that.
Mayor, the mayor and I had a similar discussion, and frankly, I was waiting to see the outcome of what was going on with day by day. Now that that's kind of behind us, now we can start looking at our applications so that we can bring something forward. So I, I'm of similar mind, and we'll be working on that and bringing that forward to you.
Excellent.
But I will put it on until, until it's on.
And it looks like we have a few more future workshops.
Yeah, just as a reminder, the first workshop related to implementing the housing study, that's scheduled for May 24th. I already mentioned the July 6 budget workshop. And then again, thank you for your response, as well as your generous donation of time for July 12th for our strategic planning workshop. Parenthetically, tomorrow, staff will be doing the managers' and supervisors' meeting, so we'll have an all-day retreat, get that input, synthesize it, and have it ready when we meet in July to go through that. So I'm looking forward to it. It's always an exciting event. It's amazing that in the two years since we lasted the strategic plan, number of new staff members that are gonna be part of that, number of new council members as well, so it'll, it's always an interesting process and looking forward to it. We have a new consultant, Nicole Lance, out of Phoenix area, and she'll be joining us tomorrow. I think she's flying in right about now, and then she'll be back in July when we have the exercise with the council.
I'm sorry, what was the name again?
Nicole Lance is the name of the consultant.
Is that the name of the company, too?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's, you know, Nicole Lance, comma, LLC or something like that, yeah. I can't remember the name specifically, but I've had other colleagues who have used her services and are quite satisfied with her, so she comes highly recommended. Our folks from, our friends from Invisio that work on our software, they also, through their contacts, recommended Nicole as well. So looking forward to it, and you'll hear, after tomorrow, you'll hear the reviews from the managers and department heads.
All right, and we are at the point of discussing the increasing amount of debt issuance to cover 2023 CIP projects.
And with that, I'm gonna turn over to Mr. Van Gomp.
So included in your packet is a, a short memo with some additional exhibits. Back on April 12th, the city council directed me to look at the potential of increasing our debt issuance costs in 2022 for the 2023 projects. Attached to the memo is a list of the 2022 projects that you approved and gave some direction when we did the CIP process last year. And I showed you the exhibit that breaks it out between bonds and notes and projected payback terms. After our discussion on April 12th, we decided, as council decided, to do some additional funding for the Parks Administration Facility Building, which brought the total projects up to 22,950,900. So in looking at the 2023 projects right now, and again, last year, we went through the planning process, we identified a potential list of 18,934, just above that a little bit. And so the city manager and myself looked at that list and pretty much looked at basically four different categories and are asking for your consideration if you so desire to add an additional 7,300,500 to the 2022 debt issuance for those projects. The remaining projects, about 11,600,000, still will need some additional discussion as we go through the 2023 capital improvement planning process, and we would also have to have some discussion about the amount of debt that you would be interested in issuing in 2023. The last direction we got from council was to return to a goal of issuing about 15 million dollars in general obligation debt. If we were to stay at that dollar amount, we're gonna be short on the list of projects we have by about, we'll still have to finance about 7,700,000. So take the 7.3 away from 15, that's how you come up with the 7.7. So you have the list in front of you, and we broke them down into, for 2023, the different categories, being street projects that we pretty much are fairly certain will happen. We have some funding for ongoing allowances, there's two projects in there, and category C is major equipment. Those subtotals then bring us to the 7,300,500. I'm not sure if there's any specific questions or if the city manager has any additional comments on that, but that's just an overview of a consideration for you.
Councilmember Miller, Ford, and then I have some questions.
Thank you, Mayor. So, James, are you still, are you still online?
Yes, sir.
Russ, I think you covered one of my questions, and I always hate to make these assumptions live during meetings, but did you factor in the projects that, that may not happen? I thought you mentioned something about that. So did you, did you and James factor in projects that are gonna start late in the year and probably not require full capitalization or, or payment this year as, as part of that process? And I'm sorry if I missed it and I'm being redundant, so.
No, that's a good question. The projects are fully funding, the projects that we wanted to get underway. For 2023 projects, we have applied for a couple of these, at least two of these projects to be funded in part by that bipartisan infrastructure bill.
Okay.
So the amounts in 2023 are only the local share for those projects, so we've taken that into account. I don't know if that, that's a little bit sidebar to your question, but.
It, it answers it. It answers it.
Typically, we fund the whole project.
Right. Okay. James, anything to add to this?
No, I, I don't think so. That was one of the things that Russ and I were talking about at length here for the last week or two, is making sure that we did have the bipartisan infrastructure law projects included, and they are.
Okay, great. Nice job, guys. Great, great presentation and forward-thinking. Thank you both very much.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes, so, so big picture, essentially what we're doing here is taking about 50% of our planned debt issuance for next year and shifting it to this year, take advantage of low interest rates.
Correct.
Correct. So we'll have decisions along the line next year, just like we always do.
Yeah.
Whether we want to exceed, right, the 15 million threshold we, we put out there.
Correct. You'll still have to have the discussion as part of the CIP process on any remaining funds, if any.
Yeah.
That you want to consider and fund.
Okay. No, thank you. I just want to make clear to the, you know, to the thousands of people watching at home that I always assume are, that this isn't us randomly throwing 7 million dollars of new debt. We're shifting stuff from next year to take advantage of the situation.
Correct. And if there are specific questions about current market conditions.
Yeah.
Mr. Todd Taves from Elers is, I believe, still on the line.
Okay.
That could answer questions, but basically what we're saying is we want to take advantage of the market conditions as they exist today.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's some, there has been some debate and discussion between myself and Mr. Taves on where it is, but there's a reality that we could still see some additional increases in interest rates between now and we actually do the date of the sale. So we're protecting ourselves for that, but the thought process would be that next year at this time, rates will even be higher.
Yeah.
So we want to take advantage of the current market rates as best we can.
Makes perfect sense. Thank you.
All right, I have two questions. One is specific to page 237, under category D, future financing considerations. So we have tip 38 Riverwalk on Pioneer Island, and then about two-thirds of the way down, tip 38 Riverwalk east of Pioneer Drive, including the, is that the South Breakwater? So two different entries here. Are we somehow duplicating or are these separated out? Because that's like 3 million dollars.
Yeah, I know. There's, they're two separate projects, and again, we will have to have some additional discussion when we go through the 2023 capital improvement planning process. And I don't know if Kelly wanted to answer anything on those projects.
And I think that was one of the reasons why those are not being asked to be borrowed at this time, because those category D ones, I think there's a lot of discussion.
Right.
The council still needs to have on those, and if you're gonna stay with your 15 million threshold, you know, we're down to, I think Russ said 7.7 million, this is 11, almost 11.7. So we gotta pare off about 4 million dollars to make that happen. So this is also a script for you when we, when we get to July, at our July 6 budget workshop, the purpose of that budget workshop is to talk about capital improvements for the following year, and you can't escape, you can't separate capital projects and the borrowing, so that's really gonna be the big issue. You will have committed 7.3 million of your allotment next year, so the good news is that part of July 6, you're, you're kinda working on tonight and whatever you ultimately do with the borrowing in a couple of weeks. But what you've also done is you've limited the percentage you're gonna have to cut now when you're down to 7.7 million left. It's gonna be a little tougher, so you're gonna have to ask questions like you're just asking, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, and the second follow-up question is regarding the, you know, the resolution that we passed a few weeks back on environmental justice and the incorporation of that EJ impact on some of the projects. Do you anticipate that we will be looking at that ahead of that CIP session?
It's actually gonna be part of the evaluation process. After that discussion at the city council level, the city manager and myself made some just minor adjustments to the scoring of capital improvements to include that, that component in our scoring. We'll get you that scoring sheet out, and so you can see what that is gonna look like, but we will take that into consideration in determining what projects might be recommended for your consideration.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, and then Councilmember Miller again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to say thank you to, to the finance team for even considering this. As a municipal finance director, it's probably gonna scare the daylights out of you for us to suggest doing what we're doing, and I know that and I appreciate that. However, I also appreciate that you see the reason why, and that it's prudent to at least have a discussion, and it's responsible physically for us to consider this as an option for us, given what the market is right now and what we anticipate it will be over the next 12 months plus. So I was, a big appreciation for me to the whole, the finance team for even considering this. For those at home, this is about risk mitigation, and there's a risk even doing this, though. I mean, nobody has a crystal ball, nobody knows anything about what the market's gonna do, the rates, costs. However, every leading indicator says interest rates are going up, and on a seven-and-a-half million dollar loan, even a one percentage point move could be anywhere from a half million to a million dollars in savings for this community. That's a big number, and it's absolutely something that I'm very in favor of, of looking at to save that, that amount of money for the taxpayers in Oshkosh. I know you've got something you want to ask, but I want to ask Mr. Taves a question if he's on the line still.
Yeah, I'm sure he's still on the li, line, and I would invite Mr. Taves to comment too, but I guess before we get to Todd, yeah, this, this has caused me some heartburn, and you, you said it quite eloquently, is that there's a risk, and the risk is nobody has a crystal ball that's gonna predict where municipal interest rates will be one year from now. And so I would invite Todd to chime in.
Actually, I've got a, a direct question. Interest rates now, Mr. Taves, welcome if you're, if you're there.
Hey, I am.
Excellent, welcome. Give us your perspective on interest rates in the marketplace for, for our debt, and, you know, a small historical context and a little bit of forward-thinking, I guess, as well, in terms of where you're seeing what, what movement has happened in the last short term, in the last few weeks, and what's expected, I guess, even over the next few weeks as the Fed is indicating some strong rates, rate increases.
Well, as you might be aware, markets tend to price things in, in advance, so some of that predicted 50 basis point increase could very well be baked into the numbers, but I think as was mentioned, the thought process right now is we are likely, at least in the shorter term, to continue to see interest rates move upward. We have revised our projections and we're waiting on the conversation this evening, but tomorrow we will be sending out new revisions, and to be conservative, we're assuming that rates will in fact go up another one-half percent between now and the time of the sales in June, and that's particularly important on the revenue bond issues in terms of anticipating the size of the debt service reserve, as well as making sure we can meet the bond covenants. I did want to share a quick snapshot here, if I have permission to do so. In terms of the historical perspective, and I'm, I'm assuming folks can see my screen, but.
We can.
Is that, you can?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. This is what we call the Bond Buyer Index, and this is over the last 12-month period. And what you'll see here is, and what this is, it's a measure of the average interest rate return to an investor on a bond maturing 20 years from now, so it's that 20th-year interest or coupon rate. And you can see we were very, very stable and also quite low, all the way up until early spring of this year, and, you know, what we've seen here, just literally over the last six weeks, is that index jumping up, you know, from roughly 2.5%, which was already, you know, about a half percent over where it was at the beginning of the year, and jumping up, you know, another 100 basis points all the way to 3.5%. One other item I would like to just show you quickly again as a matter of perspective is that same index, but looking at it over a much longer time horizon of 20 years. So that same index over a 20-year period, the average BBI is 3.99. So, that same index over a 20-year period, the average BBI is 3.99. And, you know, we've not hit that yet, but if we do go up, you know, roughly another half percent over the several months, we will be at about the 20-year average in terms of where tax-exempt municipal bond rates have been. And there are a number of questions there. I'm not sure if I hit all of them, so if there was something I failed to speak to, let me know, and I'm happy to address that.
No, I think, I think the info provided is, is good and relevant. I think we have a small window of time. We've lost, the last 60 to 90 days were, were the, the most advantageous probably for us. And if we get too far down the road, that risk mitigation or that cost-benefit analysis probably equals out in terms of, is it worth it or not? Go ahead, Finance Director.
Yeah. The way we're progressing with the timeline is exactly how we had things laid out. Initially, we were going to come forward with the preliminary resolution this evening. That'll be before you, on May 10. But there is a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes and working with Ellers and working with our bond council, separate bond council, to help review our financing mechanisms and tools and issuance. So, we, we're able to accommodate your desire to add 7.3 million dollars now, but we're like right up to the kind of end of that process, because we really have to kind of keep things moving. Otherwise, we face the possibility of that date even getting pushed further, which I don't think is good for the community. So, if, if you want to move forward, we're looking for correction tonight on the 7.3, and it keeps us on our timeline to get this issued in June.
Councilmember Miller, and then Ford.
Thank you, Mayor. Todd, hey, it, it's Miller. Two, two questions for you. How many, how many other communities are, are getting ahead of the game like we are right now? And, and I know you can probably only speak to your clientele, but can you give us an idea of how popular this is right now?
You know, a lot of communities, especially smaller ones, tend to borrow on a multi-year basis in any event, simply because it's more economical for them to go to market every two or three years versus annually. The, the city has, obviously, a larger capital improvement program size based on the size of the community, so it's made sense to go annually. But I, I wouldn't necessarily say we've seen any substantial changes in patterns at, at this point. But, you know, it's not by any stretch unusual or, you know, out of the ordinary for a community to consider funding its CIP on a multi-year pace, basis, if there is a rationale to do that.
Thank you. My, my last question is, and this is my most serious question, is, is it a lot cheaper to have you do this via video conference than in person?
Not, no, no.
Yeah.
I'm always happy to be there. But I appreciate the ability to, to pop in virtually, and I've been actually working on your items while I've been online here. So, in that sense, there's inefficiency there.
Good, good answer. Thanks, Todd.
Welcome.
Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, to answer your question, yes, I, I'm in favor of moving forward with this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, our plan will have it on the next agenda, and we'll still be on track for our June closing, which has been our intent all along.
Giddy up, Russ.
That's it. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Todd.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
We are at Councilmember announcements and statements. This is the point where council members can report on their boards and commissions, or if they have any statements to make. Do we have any reports? I'm going to share three items. First of all, Bike and Pedestrian Committee, just an announcement that Bike Osh event is around the corner. Hopefully, we will not be hitching up the sled dogs for this one, May 21. And you can get your punch passes around town. Turn those in for tickets and prizes the morning of, when you complete that. And then, the Parks Advisory Board reports that the Chief Oshkosh Plax and the update for the monument, it looks like we've got about 14 weeks before those are produced. So, we'd be looking at late summer, early fall for installation for folks who are asking for follow-up information on that. And then, one final thing. I understand that the first Cinco de Mayo event in Oshkosh is taking place at South Park on May 6th and 7th, so check that out. Anyone else on Board of Commissions? Then we're at City Manager Announcements and Statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First things first, outstanding issues is in your packet. Certainly happy to answer any questions. The Deputy Mayor and I were talking today, and it's time for me to give you the first quarter update on my goals for the year. They are reflected in there, in outstanding issues. So, it'll just be a more, more narrative in terms of the details. But certainly with, and we talked earlier regarding day-by-day shelter, now that that issue is pretty much behind us, they're going to be scheduling the groundbreaking within the next less than 30 days now. So, you should be hearing from them shortly about that. And we'll be looking at the other ARPA projects, which will include some other projects that include addressing homelessness. So, you'll be hearing more about that. And certainly happy to answer any other questions on any other items that are in there. I just came from a meeting of the Alliance of Cities today, discussing in some length the local government funding committee that consists of representatives from the League of Municipalities, the Town Association, and County Association. I'm on that committee. Mr. Ford, wearing his other hat, has periodically lent information for the research that the group is doing to, to frame the issues that are before us. But we had a good discussion today with the, the municipal leaders from the larger cities, and talking about how we want to proceed with that, and, and setting the table so that by the time a new legislature and governor's race has been determined that we can work with whomever is in power come January, because that'll be the biennial budget with the state, and we certainly want to be at the table for that. So, that's what I have in that regard, unless there's any questions.
Two questions on two items in the outstanding issues. So, I think we're going on two years on waiting for discussion on the lifeline rates, and I know that there have been hiccups along the way, but I, I see that that's now even moved off into July. Is that because the Clearwell project has been moved off? Is this, because I think we've now gone through two rate application cycles, waiting on that discussion, and is there some reason why we can't have it sooner?
We haven't missed any deadlines.
No, not missing deadlines. My, my question is, we, we've been talking about, talking about this for about two years, and there have been things that have moved that off in the outstanding issues. Is there a reason why we're moving it off again?
You want to take that, Russ? Yeah. As far as the water rate application, because of the timing of the Clearwell projects, we are proceeding with doing a rate case analysis and filing with the Public Service Commission. Right now, we just are finishing up our financial information from the operations for 2021. Yeah. All these years have gone by, and I can't even keep my years straight. So, after we do that, we have to do our filing with the Public Service Commission on our, our report for the end of the year of 2021. Once we do that, we will be working with Ellers to actually do a formal rate application process, where they look at not only the, the report to the Public Service Commission, but other statistical information that's needed to do that rate application. So, we are proceeding with that.
So, when is that next rate application anticipated?
Um, probably, it's, it's going to get submitted to the Public Service Commission this year, in probably June, July-ish. And then, we're subject to their approval process, which can be lengthy. We are doing our best to compile the information and make that application.
Okay. Then, the other follow-up question is regarding the RA Smith on the next steps of the special assessment, street improvement, transportation utility fee. Any additional detail you can share on that?
They're finishing up the work of the new traffic manual. That's all based on the traffic, uniform traffic manual, that, they're updating all the numbers on that. Once they have that, then I think we're going to be prepared to come back to council with the recommendation.
Have they given any kind of estimated?
I don't know. James, are you still on?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you've heard anything from Mr. Mazanik.
Uh, no, I haven't talked timeframe with him recently on that project. I'm due to have a catch-up with him here in the very near future.
I had, May 10, I, I wanted to get something on the radar by that time. So, we'll find out by our next meeting. We'll have an update for you.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Can I, Russ, can I jump back to the lifeline thing for a second? Are, are we going to see, are, are we going to see how much this will impact our, our low-income people, i.e. how much this will save them on a monthly basis? Or, or will we not get into that minutia? That's my number-one question. Then, number two is, then we have to vote on that as a council. Is that correct?
Correct. You will get two alternatives, what water rates would be with a lifeline established, and what it would be without a lifeline. And you would have to make that determination of, of which model you want to use to submit to the Public Service Commission.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. All right. If there are no other questions on outstanding issues.
Thank you. The first quarter strategic plan update is available on the web. Encourage you to look at that. It's a pretty thick document, so we just encourage you to take a look at it on the website. The other item, number 36, is recognition of a new neighborhood association. This is a little different than what we've done, but it's the Downtown Oshkosh Neighborhood Association. So, it's a lot of businesses, but downtown, that area also includes residences above some of the, some of the businesses on Main Street. They did some, the Downtown Business Group did some negotiations with some of the residential shoulder areas of downtown, so that there was a friendly transfer of, of territories. But it pretty much follows the, the bid, the bid boundaries, roughly. So, we're happy that they're, they're engaged and they want to start activities, and I think they've, they've had some discussions. I'm going to defer to the mayor just a little. They've, they've, I think they've reached out to some of the residential groups, at least to say, hey, we're here, and we're here to work with you if necessary. So, we'll see if there's any, there's anything that comes from that. But they'll be working on some projects they themselves want to engage in.
I did want to ask a follow-up question, though. This actually, on the map, extends an additional block north of the bid into the 600 block of North Main. Is there any thought or discussion, do we know, of the bid potentially expanding to match that footprint?
It's a very, it's, it's not as easy as it sounds. It's not a matter of going to that extra group and saying, is there a majority of you interested? The entire bid would have to vote on the entire area. There's always the risk of they could simply reject the whole thing, and then the bid would dissolve. So, there's a little bit of, that's a decision that the bid board would have to make, come to you and ask that to be done, because they would have to vote on, the, the new bid would have to vote on that. It's not as simple as a simple majority of the extra area apply, and if a simple majority says yes, it's not, it's not that way. It has to be the entire bid, and it could...
I thought it was 66% of the parcel owners.
Yes, you're, I'm sorry. You are correct. But it would require the entire area to vote that way.
Ah.
So, if you have, you've done a lot of work to create the bid, and then if it gets undone just because you want to increase the territory, it could implode on itself. That's why, a few years ago, Councilmember Steve Herman had reached out about doing that very thing, and there was not a lot of love thrown back. So, I think it's a great question. I wish I could have a more straightforward answer for you, though.
Thank you.
Okay.
And it, it looks like they are official, and, and there have been some boundaries that are shared, that were overlapping at one point, and now it's reshaped. So, I look forward to some partnerships of, now we have, I believe, four downtown area, central city, neighborhood associations that are starting to fill in those gaps. So, appreciate that work being done.
And we're always looking for more. So, just contact Planning Services if your neighborhood is interested in joining. Now, we're well over 20 now.
And we're Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods.
Is this 22, Kelly?
Yeah.
This is number 22. So, you know, 10 years ago, we had zero. Think about that. That's, that's really something. And Mr. Floyd is here back to get number 22, so. But he's, he's happy to add 23 to his fold, aren't you, Tom? Very good. In your agenda packet is a professional services agreement update. Lexipol is a company that the fire department would like to use to get some standardized operating procedures, and this company will maintain them. So, we've started that process. In fact, I think they're, they're getting ready to roll by June 1. So, it's widely used in a lot of fire departments. It really does help them stay on top of things, to make sure they're consistent with their, with their policies and procedures. And then, last...
One second.
Oh, go ahead.
Clarify for me, wasn't this part of the budget enhancement requests that were presented to us in the fall that we chose not to accept? The training manual software system? This sounds eerily familiar to me.
I'm going to have the chief answer that one.
You are correct. We did submit a budget enhancement for it, which was not approved in the last process for the 2022 budget. We were able to identify some federal funding and reimbursement that did not come out of the operations budget to fund this, this program.
Fully funded?
Correct.
I like free. Free's good.
And we should have put that in the fiscal impact, because I, I do that, but I was like, wait a minute, it's not in there.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Well, let me follow up to a point that was made earlier. Ongoing costs, now that we're part of it, now that we're in it, we got the funds to get it one time. Are we on the hook for this long term, and what's that look like?
Actually, the funding was sufficient enough to, to get it for three years, which is, as you know, the extent that we can contract with under the city ordinances. You know, past that, we'll have to come back and talk about budget enhancement. And then, we've also, since then, identified some additional funding from the League of Municipal, of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance, where they give us a rebate, basically, or give us some funding towards that. So, we're finding, continuing to find ways to bring that price down, so that we don't have an impact on the operational budget.
Excellent, dear. Thank you.
And then, lastly, we just had this in there for an update. I'm not sure if the city clerk has any recent updates, because redistricting, that's been a, an ongoing issue. So, I don't know, Jesse, if you have anything to share with the council now, or more to come.
There is more to come. The State Supreme Court did approve a set of maps, approved a set of maps, April 15. We were notified of the impact to the municipalities on April 20, which is after the April 15 statutory deadline for that to all be implemented. So, our GIS person, Jeff, is working on getting the new information with our wards to figure out how many wards we're going to end up with. We are going to have to add more wards than I would like, but we are going to have to add some wards due to the assembly maps. But we'll bring that back to you for your review and approval on May 10.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
All on paper?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. We're adjourned.